Okay, shall we start? Hello, welcome everybody. And this is the first committee meeting of the Children and Young People's Policy. So, welcome and thank you to those members that have put themselves forward to be part of this in very, what I would consider to be the most important committee. But I'm sure that every chair has said that and will do as they get to sit in this seat. So, if I would like to ask everybody to introduce themselves. So, I'm councillor Townsend, I'm Southfield Ward and I chair this committee.
Hello, my name's Jo Holmes and I'm the policy committee coordinator.
Hello, my name is Katia Hearnchen, councillor Katia Hearnchen and I'm from Basington East Hall and I'm the vice-chair, also the Labour lead.
Hi, I'm Susan Connor and I am the councillor, I keep saying that, councillor for Bishop's Report.
Hi, I'm Eddie Freeman, I'm councillor for Bedminster.
I'm Cam Haywood, councillor for Nowham.
I'm Shumi Jemfree, councillor for Lawrence Hill and obviously have a baby with me, so apologies for any noises or interruptions she makes.
Please feel free to exit if you feel you need to. Yep.
Councillor Sarah Classic for Henley Road, Whitechurch Park.
Councillor Henry Michelle for Stigfisher.
And our officers in attendance are...
Hi, Hannah Gillett, senior commissioning manager for Children and Education.
Hello, I'm Gail Rogers, I'm the head of the Children's Commissioning.
Hello, I'm Fiona Tudge, I'm dresser of Children and Families.
Hello, I'm Gal Marshall, the finance business partner for Children's Education.
And Ben Hallwood, as executive director of Children and Families.
And so, we are not expecting any fire alarms to go off. So, if there is a fire alarm, it means that it's real and we need to respond to it. So, it would be back out, the way in which we came in and then through the main doors and then we, I think we gather by the cathedral, is that correct? Yes. I've had one apology from councillor Kerry Bales, that's all I'm aware of. That's what, that's what we've had, okay. I can't see that there's been a substitute. No, there's no substitute, okay, so we're one, we're one member down, okay. Agenda item three is whether any committee members to my left and obviously myself have anything that they need to declare in relation to the business that we are about to discuss on the agenda today. I'll take that as a no, okay, thank you very much. So, and then it comes on to item four, which is the chair's announcement. So, welcome and thank you very much. But what I am going to say is this is the first time that I've chaired this particular policy committee, because it's the first time it's sat. I do have a script because there are elements that I need to make sure that are recorded and that are read out. And there's a particular procedure that we have to follow because we are the decision-makers collectively around some of the things that will come to us. And I hope that as we move forward, we will have a very active and lively committee and that we will feel that we are moving our city forward for our children and our young people. Thank you very much. Okay, so item number five is the public forum. So, public forum has slightly, has been slightly widened under the committee system. So, we're members of the public or any other, any other person that wishes to address us now has the option to put in three questions, whereas under the other system it was two questions. So, everybody's able to make, ask three questions and it can be on any item that this, that might, will come under the remit of this policy committee. So, people don't have to wait until it's on our agenda in order to ask those questions, they can just bring those statements or questions to us. We've not had any questions been submitted today to our committee, but we have got two public statements. Members of the committee have had these statements circulated and they have been published with the agenda papers on the council's website. And therefore, I'm going to, I can see that there's some members of the public sat in the gallery, so... The first person that I have is Debbie Temme on behalf of FACE. Is Debbie here?
No, she's not here.
No, she's not here, okay. In which case, we go on to Matt Justice from Wessel.
Hello everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
And so, I'm speaking on behalf of what's known for the Out and About Consortium, which is the external organisation of Bristol City Council that deliver the short breaks commissioned by Bristol City Council. So, and we're writing on behalf of the trustees of these boards to express our grave concerns regarding the proposed 10% funding cut to the short breaks provision for disabled children. We urge the committee to reconsider this proposal in the light of the detrimental impact it will have on support for families of disabled children, particularly those with complex needs and those living in the most deprived ward or facing cultural or language barriers or accessing services. There is no clear rationale outlined for reducing existing services which offer good value for money and prevent families going into crisis, thus requiring more expensive services. In addition, the proposal was widely condemned during the consultation process. The EQIA does not clarify the actual impact on this cohort of disabled children and young people or their families or to offer any effective mitigation. We urge the committee to reconsider the approach and instead to work with disabled peoples and parent care organisations to build an existing excellent provision and co-produce an alternative solution. We appreciate the financial challenges faced by the council, but strongly believe that cutting this essential support is not the solution. We hope the committee will take this feedback into account and prioritise the wellbeing of our communities most vulnerable. So, the impact on disabled children and their families. Short breaks provide essential support for families of disabled children, allowing them to take necessary breaks from their caregiving responsibilities. Current providers have been exceptionally proactive and innovative over the past few years, continuing to earn priority services at substantially reduced costs through various efficiency measures and community partnerships. However, further reductions in funding threatens their sustainability and the wellbeing of the families they support. Any cuts mean that some families will go without support so that others can receive it, leaving between pre-stress, potential family breakdowns and higher costs for the council in the long term. Our most oversubscribed service is our whole initial break service, currently that has a waiting list of 60 disabled children. The proposed funding, on top of the efficiency saving that we've put in place over recent years, will inevitably exacerbate the situation by decreasing the number of available places and further delaying essential support. We don't feel that the consultation is adequate and is overwhelmingly negative. Feedback is not representative of the cohort of families receiving support with only 172 respondents. The consultation took place over the Christmas period where families were at their busiest and may not have been able to effectively engage. Respondents referred to the consultation as complex and difficult to understand and overwhelmingly showed overwhelmingly strong opposition to the proposed cuts. Parents highlighted that the services provided through short breaks were crucial for the health and stability of their families. Specific feedback included comments like, 'this funding is a lifeline, we can't hold down a job without this support'. The committee paper specifies an arbitrary figure to be cut, but does not indicate the strategic and principled considerations as to how these cuts will be targeted. The committee is unable to evaluate the impact of these cuts without clear view of what services and groups will be prioritised. The voluntary sector plays a critical role in delivering targeted short break services, currently delivering 16% of the short breaks budget. The proposed cuts threaten the sustainability of these services which are already operating on limited funding. The EQIA states that the council will seek to obtain additional funding streams to counteract the funding cuts. The voluntary sector has increasingly been relied upon to subsidise statutory services, which is unsustainable, unfair and places undue financial strain, diverting resources from other critical services and jeopardising their financial stability. Moreover, many funding bodies, like the National Lottery Community Fund, cannot consider funding which replaces statutory responsibilities due to their additionality rules. Real terms of funding reductions have already been implemented due to funding levels remaining constant since 2018, whilst in that time inflation has risen by 25%. National providers such as SENS and the National Autistic Society have found short breaks provision in Bristol to be unviable and of access to the market, whilst local BCSE providers such as Tyche Share, Bristol Flavers and Hoxgibbon Jump have been forced to close down, leaving the Out and About Consortium to absorb their delivery and narrow in, narrowing the diversity of local specialist providers. Voluntary organisations provide the widest offering of support and are often the most adaptable and responsive to the needs of the community. A reduction in funding would lead to shorter sessions, fewer available slots and longer waiting lists, significantly diminishing the quality and accessibility of support for families. It's imperative that the council works in close collaboration with disabled people's organisations and parent care forums like Wessel, Bristol Ops and Support and Bristol Parent Cares. These organisations possess a deep understanding of the unique challenges faced by disabled people and parents and parents of disabled children. Their expertise and insights are invaluable in shaping services that are truly effective and responsive to the needs of the community. Investing in this early intervention and prevention method through various services within the current short breaks delivery will maintain family stability and prevent crises. It helps families manage the challenges of caring for disabled children before they escalate the crime and high level interventions. Access to short breaks is not just a matter of legal obligation, but also a critical component of compassionate and responsible community strategy, as outlined in the Bristol Blighty Strategy. In light of the above, we urge the committee to reconsider the proposed funding cuts. Protecting these services is not only a moral and legal obligation, but also a prudent financial decision that will prevent high costs and greater strain on public services in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Matt for that. So, that refers to agenda item number nine, because I've had the statements and it may well be that the presenting officer addresses some of the areas that you've raised in your statement when we get to that paper. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to agenda item number six, which is the Children and Young People's Policy Committee Annual Business Report. And the committee is, we're advised that this is the annual business report, this isn't a decision, this report is to be for noting. And Jo Holmes, our policy coordinator, is going to briefly outline what that report is for. Thank you.
Hello, as the chair stated, this is your annual business report and it's an information report. The report confirms the committee's membership, the chairing and the vice-chairing arrangements that were all agreed at annual full council in May. The report also states what the committee's terms of reference are and the meeting dates for the rest of this municipal year.
Okay, thank you Jo. So, this is one of those procedural issues, areas that I mentioned when I did Chair's Business. So, it's necessary for me to remind you as the committee that, number one, we are to note the membership of the Children and Young People's Policy Committee for 24/25. And secondly, note the appointment of myself, Christine Townsend, as the chair of the Children and Young People's Policy Committee for this year. To note the appointment of councillor Hawton as the vice-chair of the Children and Young People's Committee for this year. To note the terms of reference for this committee and to note the Young People's Policy Committee meeting dates which are in, which are listed on the report. So, can I ask that members have noted that? Yes, I... Cam? Yes, okay, thank you. And so, we move on to agenda item number seven and we deliberately put this one as the kind of first paper, if you like, that we were going to discuss today. Because corporate, this is where corporate parenting responsibilities are scrutinised and overseen. So, corporate parenting responsibilities are those that relate to our children in care, our foster carers, the stuff related to that and our care leavers. And like, like most adults who, those of us that have children, it is one of our main key areas and as a council, this responsibility is across our committee, but it's also across every member, elected member within this council. And to that end, I'm going to ask our director of Children and Families to introduce the report, Fiona Tudge. Again, this one is for noting and Fiona's are going to give us a little outline of what's new in this corporate parenting strategy and importantly, how we got to this point because it's a bit different, isn't it? We've made some progress.
It is indeed, yeah. So, as you, as you all know, as the chair said, corporate parenting is a core function of our local authority and the strategy and pledge is a way for the local authority to demonstrate its commitment and its activities around our corporate parenting duties. And so, this strategy this, this year has been refreshed and although it's coming to this committee, it is actually a citywide strategy. It's been co-produced with our colleagues from health, our colleagues in police, our universities and our voluntary sector organisations. Significantly, our children and young people have been involved in that, both locally and nationally, taking their views and being influenced by that. And it's been co-produced by other parts of our council, so our colleagues within our leisure services, our libraries, our housing colleagues, of course, our education colleagues who are here today. So, it looks slightly different this time. Previous strategies have been very much driven by children education services, but this has been very much a council-led strategy this time and our task and finish group that has been across partners has also been led by a directorate outside of Children and Families. So, really trying to kind of demonstrate the commitment across the city for our children and families. And as you can see, there are six priorities for our children and family that have come out of this co-production. That's about our children having meaningful relationships and the opportunity to keep their relationships with their families as well as building meaningful relationships with others, to have positive futures for our children, to support our children in their identity and belonging, to enable our children to live in safe and stable homes, to have happy and healthy lives. And for us to look after those who look after our children, so our foster carers, our children, our residential childcare workers and our own workforce in terms of social workers and our practitioners who work with children. So, those are our key priorities. We are developing an action plan that will sit underneath that. That action plan will come to full council on an annual basis, but it will also sit under the governance of our corporate parenting panel and they will look at that action plan and progress against that. We will have some task and finish groups that again will be citywide and across council membership within those task and finish groups to progress up against our priorities.
Thank you very much. And so, alongside this corporate parenting strategy that takes us from this year until 2029 is also the pledge that we as a corporate parenting body give to our children in care and our care leavers. So, I'm opening up to committee members as to whether they have any questions or any comments or any points that they would like to highlight in relation to this strategy or the pledge.
I just wanted to say that as somebody that's new to this, it was really, I really enjoyed reading it, I thought it was really clear, it was great that you explained the terms and it was lovely to see how you included your users as well. It was quite refreshing, I thought. I just wanted to ask how often we'll be getting updates on how we're doing on meeting these targets because obviously it's quite a big lot, wide goals, so I can't break down into details at this point, but it would be good to sort of know what the regular progress is being made on it.
Yeah, I mean, is that, I mean annually, what I would say about the corporate parenting is that we have the corporate parenting board of which some of us are probably members and I chair that as the executive member for children, for children's services. And that is a private board, so there are members on that board that come regularly and we have those interactions with the different services because it's, whilst it sits within authority, we cannot do it alone, we have to have those other voluntary and statutory services and we also have foster care representation on that corporate board. So, certainly that's where the sort of ongoing monitoring and sort of scrutiny happens. However, I'm looking at Fiona to, in the, in the past, have you brought an update annually because it is a five-year report or strategy?
Previously, the annual update has come to full council, but we can bring that here, that's, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah, so would members like to see, because we're seeing the strategy now and then it goes into full council. So, would members be content to have a situation where the update comes also to us first and then up to full council? Yep, I'm getting some nods, okay.
Yeah, if maybe there can be some time between it coming here and going to full council so that any feedback is meaningful.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you very much. And so, go on then, Katya and then Cam?
There were two things that I wanted to ask. One was, in this particular strategy, as far as I understand it, we're asking other parts of the council to take into consideration care leavers or people that were in care at any stage in their life, not just as children. And that's something different from what we used to do before, is that correct? Or maybe we should have done it, we didn't do as much. I think, yeah, we, we had plans before, but it is now absolutely embedded into the strategy that whenever another part of our council is thinking about their own policies, procedures, processes, that they consider children in care within those new policies and procedures. That would be an interesting thing to see if we could, I don't know how you would do this and I don't want to put in extra, too much extra work, but how would we actually, maybe once a year, nudge the other committees perhaps? I'm open to suggestion. What are you doing about your offer in this particular regard? Because I think it's really important, which leads on to the second question and I know we discussed this before and there was a reason for it. It's turning, getting the protected characteristic label to children in care, something I'm quite passionate about, all care, people that have experienced care in their lives, because I think it never leaves them that particular period in life and it is something that helps them back in certain ways. Yeah, and we are progressing on, on that. Absolutely. We have to work with national government on that one, don't we? So, it might be worth something we can look into.
Yeah, I'm aware that the, the concept of having care experience as part of something that you put into consideration around, in the, in the way that you would put the characteristics in the Qualities Act is something that other local authorities have done and it's been kind of being sought, shall we say, for quite a long period of time. Hopefully, things might move forward after next Thursday. We hope, let's hope. Cam, did you want to know? Okay, was there anybody else that wished to speak or about this? No? Okay, so in that case, I will read out the official line. So, we are noting the report and then we need to agree as a committee that it will then be sent to full council and it's for full council to approve. So, I'm seeing nods, I'm assuming people are good with that. So, we will send this, Jo, to the next full council, is that correct? Or is it the one after? It's on the agenda for the July meeting, okay, so this will come back around again then in that particular. Thank you Fiona. Okay, and we move on to agenda item eight, which is the 16+ supported accommodation framework. So, this report seeks approval to join and purchase from a new South Gloucestershire council-led framework for supported accommodation for children in care and care leavers aged 16 and over. This is a key decision, key decisions have, there are two elements that make a decision, a key decision. It's either more than half a million pounds that's being spent or it's two or more wards. So, it can fit in with one or other or both of those and I would imagine that this is both. And so, this is for the head of service of Children's Commissioning to introduce an outline and report and so I'm by Gail Rogers to do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to defer to my colleague Hannah Gillett, who has written the report and will introduce it and we'll answer any questions together.
Thank you. Yes, so we are, as the chair said, we're seeking to join the South Gloucestershire-led framework, which will be a mechanism from which to buy our 6B plus supported accommodation. And this provides a range of different accommodations, so self-contained for children, so that's sole accommodation for them, or shared whereby they'd be living with other young people. They might have their own bedroom and bathroom, but would share a kitchen and living spaces. We currently have around 90 young people in this type of accommodation at the moment. We've previously been holding our own framework, that's been running quite well, but we think there's benefits in joining with our regional partners. So, we know that we can kind of come together to work with the market more effectively and make sure that if there are any quality issues across the market, that we're across it as a consortium of authorities and that we're sharing intel and making sure that the services we buy are of the highest quality. In order for providers to join the framework, they'll have to demonstrate that they have passed our minimum quality standards, they'll have to have safeguarding and qualities assessments undertaken in order to pass and set out their prices at the point of tender so that we're ensuring we're getting value for money as well. This market has just become regulated by Ofsted in October of last year, so we're going to, we think that's a really positive step because it's again bringing further quality into the market. And the tender's out currently, so it's going to be live in August of 2024 and that gives us a bit of time. Our framework, existing framework ends in September of next year, so that gives us almost a year to kind of move our providers onto the new framework to make sure that there's no gap in provision. And it doesn't mean that because the new provider hasn't joined this one that children are being made to move, so there'll be that smooth transition for young people over. There's no committed spend under a framework contract, but we've got provision to spend up to £13 billion a year. That doesn't mean we will, but it just means if we saw an increase in demand that there's scope under the framework to do so.
Okay, thank you Hannah. And so, I'm looking at my committee members as to whether anyone's got any specific questions they'd wish to ask. Go ahead, yeah, and then Katya.
The only question that I have just, just out of interest is that are any other local authorities planning to join the South Gloucestershire-led framework?
Yep, so it's South Gloucestershire, Vane, so Bath North East Somerset, Bristol, North Somerset, Wiltshire and Swindon. So, it's coming together as our kind of local group so that we've got that shared intel together.
And Katya?
The question I wanted to ask is, do we have any safeguards or do, will we know anything that will happen in these units that we're purchasing? Because I've had some very dubious things in the past that have happened to young people of that particular age, could care leavers putting in Kingswood when they had their, their apprenticeship in Clifton, that sort of thing, too far away, or putting these young people together in very uns, with, together with very unsuitable young people so that, I can't remember what the right word is, they were very vulnerable to certain temptations and then they ended up in an area where these temptations were really great. To put it in a milder context, if that was, what kinds of safeguards do we have? Because we know that there's a lot of money made out of children in care at the moment, it's a big business at the moment. And what are we doing to safeguard against that? Because South Gloucestershire does not have a very good reputation. It might have changed now with the new council, I don't know, but...
Yeah, thank you. So, a big step in that is the fact that the market's now become Ofsted-regulated, which means that before they didn't have to have evidence and equality standards, they now have to have gone through the rigorous Ofsted regime in order to be approved and only Ofsted-approved providers will be on the framework. There's a matching process that would take place when placements are made into this type of provision to make sure that children are placed alongside those that are suitable and this accommodation will be ring-fenced to similarly aged young people. Working together means that where we are becoming aware of concerns, we can share that and that we have quality assurance processes in place. So, we go out and undertake visits to the properties, kind of assess review plans, make sure that everything's in place around, you know, safer recruitment, DBS check of staff and making sure that kind of we're on top of that, both before they get onto the framework and then on an ongoing basis to monitor that.
That's part of the costing, is the ongoing monitoring, so there's not going to be another run out of money to monitor them because that seems to be another thing that happens. run out of money to monitor them, because that seems to be another thing that happens.
Uh no, so that's all uh included, so we've kind of, we will pay a contribution to South Gloucestershire, three thousand pounds for the initial tendering process, to reimburse them for their procurement, but then we'll work together on the quality assurance monitoring, so there's not any cost associated with that.
Okay.
Um how will it work in terms of potential competition between the local authorities for different placements? Because obviously that is something, I understand, happens at the moment, and every local authority will be trying to improve their own data, so how will that competition be balanced?
So there's a mix, so when we want to make a placement, we first of all go out to all the providers on the framework, and they will be looking at that against placements from other local authorities as well. But what we do have the opportunity to do on this framework is block contract. So we say, rather than placing one young person in a provision, we can say, we've got five young people that we would like to place, what can you provide us bespoke to those young people, and we can call off a shared house for them, and that will be for our exclusive use. So there's opportunities to do those sorts of things. But equally, you know, working as a consortium with the other local authorities, it is more of a partnership. So if we were becoming aware that, you know, South Gloucestershire were taking all the placements in more provision, we could have an open conversation around, okay, how can we work together? And, you know, often there's matching issues, and it's it's more beneficial to kind of have like different young people from different local authorities. So I think it's more about partnership, working across the authorities as well, and keeping really linked in with the providers.
So I just wanted to ask a question about how Ofsted would monitor in it? I know how they monitor things in schools and stuff, but when it comes to like that alternative accommodation, how they're working with the families, with the children, how would they make that happen in that kind of framework?
So they've just started their inspection regime, so in order to get on to, to get registered with Ofsted, providers had to submit a range of policy documents, which Ofsted have been reviewing and issuing, a registration number. They're now initiating their visits out to properties and providers to make sure that kind of what's on paper matches up with the reality. So they do that, and then the homes will be inspected uh on a regular basis, depending on kind of how, if they get good or outstanding, they might be rec, visited less regularly than a home that was, they went to and got R I requires improvement. So there is a schedule, and they assess them against their uh national quality standards that they've issued, so there is a framework of which Ofsted monitor them against, and that's kind of what we've used as our basis for when we go and monitor them as well, so that we can make sure if we pick something up that's really bad, we can then feed that into Ofsted and say, you know, we've become aware of this provider that's got these issues and they're not meeting your quality standards, and that then might trigger a visit from Ofsted as well.
This is not particularly to young people leaving care, but I have seen group homes where they, someone moved in because it was nearly set up and the company didn't even provide knives and forks of cutlery. And fortunately, the parents were there, so they could then go and buy, out to the shop and buy something. They're small things, they don't necessarily cost a lot of money, but if that's not in a home, it's, doesn't make it a home, if you see what I mean, it's a huge thing. And I also know that children in that particular, well, they're young people by that stage, they're not children anymore, they're in a, they don't have parents, they don't have anybody, this is a very difficult time in their lives when they move from one section to another, and they have it much harder than most, because they don't have the family backup that children of that age normally have. You know, what do I do here? How do I get this? So so I'm very keen to make sure that these things are properly done, and they really have all the support they need. You could think that they've grown up and they can get on with themselves, and sometimes they probably are a bit dropy, but they still need that support, which they don't get when, I've seen it myself, I've witnessed it and been part of it myself, of children that get very little support around that time period. And it could be the silliest things that fool them. One was, because she had two jobs, she got ta, emergency tax and it went into a complete meltdown. And it was just been, I was there, oh no, you can do it like this, like this, for this, and then it was fine, everything was okay again. But they need that support and they don't always have it.
Yeah, so in our service specification, which kind of sets out our expectations on providers, it's got in there the standards that we expect, and absolutely, we expect them to be able to move into a home that feels homely, where they've got access to cutlery, as you say, you know, all the things that would kind of make a home a home, there's a minimum standard that we would expect of providers on that. And they have support that is kind of bespoke around that individual young person's needs, so then they might have, you know, ten hours of support a week, or they might have, you know, twenty hours, it's totally dependent on them and what they need. But also, on top of that, young people will all either have a social worker or a personal assistant to support them outside of that. Um we'll be linking in with social workers and P A's as well, to make sure that if they've got any concerns about the standard of support that providers are delivering, that they can feed that into us and we can pick it up with them.
And so I've got um a couple of questions, because the area that the framework covers is quite wide. Um so am I right in assuming that we would want to keep our Bristol children as close to Bristol as possible, if that's what they also were wanting to happen? So in that, those circumstances, and I think it kind of plays into one of the questions that you, that you said, if the, if there's a big framework and other authorities have got a child that they would like act, the closer ones to place in a Bristol home, that how do we get around that kind of competition? Is, yeah, sure.
Yes, I mean, absolutely, we want to keep children as close to Bristol as possible, and the other local authorities similarly do. We've actually found there's more provision on the outskirts of Bristol, just because of the cost of housing in Bristol being so expensive. Um and the way I think we'll get kind of around that competition is through block contracting, where we have direct relationships with those providers, and the properties are for our exclusive use, and that is possible under the framework.
And I suppose because it's, we know who the children are, we know how old they are, we know when they're going to need it, so will the other local authorities, so you're in a position where you can do some quite long lead-in planning and kind of allocation. What kind of choice do our young people get about the accommodation that they might be offered at post sixteen?
Yes, with a, they will have an opportunity, you know, around shared or self-contained, you know, that will be a conversation that kind of social workers or P A's will have with those young people that can inform plans, and then we will get that information when we're looking at our planning of sufficiency and developing properties, making sure that what we're bringing online matches that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that um all young people go to see the property that they're going to live in before they go, and they usually have their personal advisor with them. So um if they're really, and if they're really against an area or that particular property, we continue looking, these are all our children in care. Um sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, whether they come in through the homeless pathway or whether they grow up in care with us, are all our children, so we we wouldn't put our children anywhere that we wouldn't put our own children.
So, Susan, go ahead. I just wanted to ask about provision for uh young, what provision is there for young people that kind of withdraw from the service? In terms of um they get given accommodation, but they don't always accept the additional support, and they can kind of like give up a little bit and just become neat, if I can use the word neat? Um from access and support, um mental health issues, um drug alcohol issues, all those sorts of issues that might be additional to the fact that they're coming out of care. Um how how do we kind of make sure that they don't kind of withdraw from that service? They get their accommodation and they kind of go like, I'm fine, leave me alone, but they're actually going in a downward spiral? Um what kind of things do we have in place for that, some kind of scenario?
That's where kind of our quality monitoring of of providers is really important, when we go and look at support plans and see what they're doing to engage the young person, because it's, it's easy to look at a support plan and see, okay, the provider's just said they didn't want to do this. And that that highlights there's an issue with that provider, because there's different ways that you can engage those young people and bring them on board, and that's what we would expect from our providers, that if a young person does start to disengage, that they try and work differently, and that they're linking them in with, you know, other community groups across the city. So we've got a really great range of community services out in Bristol. And how are they linking in with them? Have they tried looking at their interests and tapping into, you know, other means of supporting them? And that's something that, you know, if we go and do a quality insurance visit, we'll always do an audit of their support plans to make sure that that is there. And the social workers or P A's will pick up as well if they're kind of disengaging, and they can again feed that in, so they'll have kind of both the support from the council's social workers or P A's and also from the provider, and if the provider's not delivering the support expected, that will be picked up and service improvement plans put in place if that's a systemic issue with them.
Okay, so if there's no other comments or questions in relation to that, um I will move on then. Um and so the report is asking that we, as the Children and Young People's Committee, authorizes the Executive Director of Children and Education in consultation with the Chair of the Children and Young People's Committee to take all steps required to join, award, and purchase from the South Gloucester sixteen-plus supported accommodation framework, in line with the procurement routes and the maximum budget envelope outlined in the report. And secondly, we auth, the Children and Young People's Committee authorizes the Executive Director of Children um and Education to invoke any subsequent extensions, variations, specifically defined in the framework contracts, to be awarded up to the maximum within the envelope outlined in the report. And because this is a uh key decision, we need to be really clear that we're passing both of those elements. So if we're, if you're in favor of that, um Kasia, are you happy to second these?
Yeah, I think I'd like.
Okay.
The only provision I'd say is, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
The only provision I'd say is I'd like to have like a feedback in about a year or two years or something, to see that that's working, that we're not entering into something and then we suddenly have scandals of H M Os and whatever in the newspapers, if you see what I mean. That's not, I'm scared of scandal, I'm scared of the children being involved, harmed in that, in that respect.
And so I'm going to look to Jo or possibly Ian about whether we add something into um...
Might be a thing that's going to happen anyway, so that's assured, I don't know.
So so what you're asking for is basically a monitoring situation. So in a year from now, for example, we have a report back that says, this is where we're up to now, twelve months later, this is what's happened, this is what we've found. Would we need that in here, or is that just something we could add to the kind of forward plan for this committee, that we ask for such an update? Well, I I would firstly ask officers if they would normally re, bring this back to you at any point anyways, an annual update or anything before we request it.
We would expect to do uh annual reports on any of the services we purchase under frameworks in any case, and they would be likely to go to corporate parenting panel, and we are obviously happy to present that also at this committee.
Would that be, are you content?
Yeah.
Okay. Um so we'll leave the recommendations as they are. Are you happy to second them?
I'll be happy to second them, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So in that case, we need to, I need to see hands if you're happy for this, for this uh report to be passed as a key decision, thank you, and shoulders.
Not here, so I don't know how that's currently in the chamber.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, and so that takes us on to agenda item number nine, which is the recommissioning of short breaks for disabled children. So this report receives to um agree the short breaks for disabled children budget for twenty twenty five onwards, approval to recommission the targeted short breaks for disabled children contracts, and thirdly, to approve the revised eligibility criteria for the Bristol autism project. This, like our previous paper, is a key decision, because there is a a spend of more than half a million pounds, and it has a significant impact on uh two or more wards. Um when we are considering this report, um we have read, we've read the uh papers that have been submitted to us, and this is also where the public statements would come in um for our consideration. Um and so I'm going to invite, it's not yourself, girl, is it, it's gonna be Hannah again? Okay, so um so Hannah Gillett is going to outline this paper for us, um in order for us to understand where it is that the offices are coming from, okay? We'll do that first, thank you.
Thank you. Uh so short breaks are family support services that support disabled children and young people, so that they can have a break and also give their parents a break from their caring responsibilities. So they can be at any time, ranging from an hour to an evening, overnight, weekends or holidays, dependent on the needs of that family. Um we currently organize our short breaks into in-house provision, which is our specialist provision and our commissioned targeted element. Uh there are kind of, it's a step-up approach, so we have universal services, and these are open to all children and young people in Bristol, and our in-house inclusion service can help disabled children and young people access these services. So that might be from paying for some additional staffing, support that child to access it, or offering training to settings. We then have our targeted services, which is our commissioned offer, and our specialist services, which is our residential overnight short breaks, uh direct payments, and family overnight short breaks. And so a child would kind of step up based on their level of need, they might start off in inclusion and work up to specialist if those provisions can no longer meet their needs. Uh so our short breaks are jointly funded by the local authority and the N S S G Integrated Care Board, so currently Health contribute eighteen percent of the budget, and Bristol City Council eighty-two percent of the budget. Uh in order to contribute to a balanced budget, in January twenty twenty-three, full council proposed to reduce the the Bristol City Council contribution by ten percent pending consultation. Uh the reduction was originally intended to be made in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, so this year, however, it was subsequently agreed to delay this to twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and as such, the proposal was again included in the February twenty twenty-four budget papers, on the basis it would require a committee decision, taking into account the consultation report. Uh so the consultation report has been appended. Um throughout the consultation, we held two parent care sessions, one in the evening, one at lunchtime, a coffee morning at a special school, a session with our commissioned uh B M E short break service, where the provider helped us translate the consultation into Urdu, and a session at community of groups, which was attended by a number of our providers and parented organizations, all to try and help explain the consultation and capture views. We did get feedback quite early on into the consultation, that parents found it quite hard, uh as we've heard from our public statement. So we published a sort of PowerPoint to try and help guide families through it, but we do take that on board, and it's something that we're looking at going forward. Additionally, we've had some feedback about kind of accessibility of sessions. So what we want to do is, after we get a decision on what our budget is, so that we can plan for our recommissioning of services, we've got a schedule of five parent care events and two organization events, to make sure that we're capturing the views of parents and what they want the services to look like going forward. Uh so taking forward the proposals would mean uh the budget would be reduced by ten percent, which would mean we could recommission our targeted offer at a budget of four hundred and forty-eight thousand pound per year, and that the service would be commissioned on a three plus one plus one basis, meaning that the total possible spend over the life of a contract would be two point two four million. Um taking on board, you know, what we've heard about what would the actual impact of that be? So we've looked at kind of a minimal impact where possible, so we're looking at an internal service review, looking at our kind of internal staffing structures and contractual arrangements, uh deleting vacant posts where no longer needed. Additionally, we think we can take seventy-five thousand pounds of that from the holiday residential short break service, so the provider handed back that contract two years ago, and we've been unable to find another provider to take that, so that's kind of been held empty. So taking that will not impact on children and young people, but then the remainder of the budget would be split proportionately across inclusion, targeted and specialist short breaks. In terms of kind of what that might look like, uh it is likely that that would mean either less regular short breaks or shorter short breaks, so we would ask the providers to respond to what we've put out, um and, you know, ask how they can kind of maximize that funding uh in, related to the kind of additional funding streams that were raised. So we recently were, we were awarded two million pounds from the D F E for our pathways to short breaks project, which is currently running alongside our standard short breaks offer, that's a timed project, but we absolutely want to be looking for more funding opportunities where we can bring in additional funding, and also directing our providers where we've become aware of. where we become aware of any funding streams that they may be able to tap into and supporting with any funding bids. I think that's kind of it in a nutshell, but if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer and any more responses.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to throw open for questioning and scrutiny from committee members. Has anybody got anything that they wish to? So if you put your hands up and indicate and then I will. And if you go ahead and then if anybody else wishes to come in after then.
Yeah, I mean, it's a really difficult one, isn't it? Because this service as provided is so beneficial to people who rely on service and with finances squeezed, it's really difficult, you know. It's a shame because our group proposed a revenue budget amendment to partially reinstate the, some of the proposed savings, but unfortunately that didn't pass. But I suppose, you know, we have such a duty to pass a budget, don't we? And, you know, if we pass it, pass it today, then the short of the service continues. But one question I did have is, I think it's point four of the recommendations about the change in the eligibility of the Bristol Autism Project to families just within Bristol City Council boundaries. Do you have lots of uptake from people outside of Bristol? I mean, will that have a big impact on families and neighbouring authorities?
It's not huge. So at the moment, the eligibility criteria is you either live in Bristol or attend a Bristol special school. So I think there was about twenty families that it would impact, so it's not huge. Obviously, it will impact them and the idea of that was so that they could kind of access services with school friends, but where, you know, it's, you know, as a, you know, said in the statement, where funding's being held the same, that's kind of meant there are additional pressures. So restricting it to children who live in Bristol is a way we can kind of make sure that our young people have predominant access to those services.
All right, just to add to that, sorry, because I'm quite used to it. So I take it then the other neighbouring authorities, do they have a similar scheme there?
Yeah, so everyone will have a range of short break services. It will look different in different areas because it's a statutory use to have a range, which could be, you know, sessions in the day, overnight, direct payments. But it's not kind of dictating exactly what that looks like. We're not aware that any local authorities have a reciprocal kind of agreement around that special school access. So, you know, most local authorities restrict it for their own young people.
Thank you.
Ellie.
Ellie, Ellie and then Shona.
I just want to echo really the fact that this feels like a really difficult decision and one that as a parent and somebody who can understand kind of how valuable this service is, it's really difficult to then be saying that this is something you want to cut. It's quite a small amount of money, so in terms of the budget, it feels like it's not going to have a big impact. But in terms of the impact that it had on most families, it's obviously, you know, that is a big impact. And I think as members of the public have expressed to us through statements today, but also I've had emails separately, is sort of trying to understand why this service is being cut. And I know that was a decision that's made quite a long time ago. I just sort of wanted to put it on record that that is something that's quite a difficult thing for, for members of the public to understand. Yeah, that's it really.
Have you got any information as to why it's this service?
Sorry, a lot of our services have been subject to budget reductions. So I don't know if it's specifically this service, but we had to, we had to publish some reductions last year in the medium-term financial plan, which we published publicly. And so you'll see, looking at that, that reductions were actually across the board, quite widely set. So this, this was a service which was hit along with lots of other services in order for us to create a balanced budget.
Shona and then Katja.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that this is a really horrible choice to be asked to make. And I mean, is, as I'm sure many of us know, it seems to be quite common after years and years of conservative austerity. And I wanted to ask if this was not approved today, what would be the implications? What would happen next? I note the saying that the saving would need to be sourced from another area within children's services. What, can you provide any more detail on that or what that procedure would happen?
The process for that, I suppose, is that the executive director would be tasked to look at where the savings would come from within the overall range of savings and we would need to find that same amount from within children's services. So the process, you know, would be a review, full review led internally, which, which also may result in our needing, our needing to consult particularly for services that have been delivered over a long period of time, the same as this one. We need to consult on making reductions. So the process will be, won't be a short process. It will, it will follow the same sort of process, I guess, that this took in that largely they would probably need to go through a consultation, the public consultation, come back and be approved by yourselves.
Katja.
I mean, I think Ellen has set that out and of course, doing that in years is very difficult. I think we all agree that, you know, we, I mean, I'll talk a bit to the finance report in a little while, setting out some of the pressures that sit not just on shorter services, but as we know, of course, local government. I think it's, as we've said, you know, it's very regrettable, but you've said it's very regrettable. We've looked here and what we're trying to do is mitigate it as much as we possibly can, also trying to do that in consultation, recognising we need to continue to learn with parents and carers as we do that. But I think, you know, part of the reality of where we are is that there isn't another, you know, we consider whether we should be looking at options. There isn't, there aren't other options that we could go to. There would be implications either way and obviously we're wanting to give clarity.
Katja, yeah.
I just had a question, well, I've got two statements, but one is a question about the seventy-five years residential short breaks. In one of these statements, it was residented that, it was said that there was a long waiting list for sick of about sixty people for holidays. Is that not the same thing?
So that's the kind of holiday, that's holiday short breaks offered is provision that's on in the school holidays. And this was a residential holiday whereby they would go on a kind of a residential holiday. So it was quite inexpensive service. It was sort of meant to be like, you know, a really good opportunity for a disabled child to go on holiday. But the reality of that is it was quite difficult to find a provider who could deliver that.
Do we know why?
I think, you know, the short breaks market has been quite hit in recent years. It has shrunk. We know other local authorities really struggle to find providers in this area. We are really lucky in Bristol that we've got some excellent providers in the market who are, you know, really passionate and have been a massive help in keeping the services going and supporting us to deliver our duty around this. But we know that some of our neighbouring authorities and authorities more widely are not as lucky to have those range of providers.
And I fear that if we give them even a small cut, knowing how charities work, even a small cut, and this was reiterated in the, in these statements as well, could make the feasibility of the charities, which are very, a whistle's not a small joke for the table bus. I think it's the first table bus on there. And they've had so many cuts over the years and they're probably all ready to shoot a string at the moment, or a smith of diesel. That could be their final death blow. And that means that you won't just have that little cut, you have another whole hole because they won't be able to fry that service. That does, has happened to charities regularly over the last fourteen years. So I'm worried about that, so that effect, which then affects the parents, not just that one hour that they're missing, which could have detrimental effects, but they could miss that entire service because the service can't run anymore because that's the last, whatever, few thousand pounds that year that they needed to just go over the line, if you see what I mean. So that's one of my worries about this because it seems in the council, council terms and everything, it's, if you took the seventy-five thousand pounds out, because we're not spending that anyway, if you took that out, it's not a huge amount of money, but the effect of what it does is massive. And if it's not happening to those people, the consequences for not having those two hours every week or that language-friendly place or whatever it is, could be massive in mental health terms, in breakdowns of families, all those kinds of things. Because that can be just the last, this is just like the last little straw. That's what I'm worried about, both for the charities and for the carers of the families and the family units.
Yeah, just to say that we, we know that how much families actually rely on short breaks and it's a really difficult thing to be involved in and to put forward and present. And, you know, that balanced budget is where we're needing to drive to. We try to work with all of our providers to, to consider sustainability and to look at how we can support them with funding, with funding from other sources as well as ours. And, yeah, I, I think it's, that's absolutely something that I guess is a risk in all sorts of taking small amounts of money off, taking small amounts of money off. And when we, we said in how we deliver this, we will be consulting both with our providers and with our parents and carers. And that's something we can include in terms of ensuring that we know what kind of impact reductions will make on our providers.
Ellie, did you want to say something? Because I've got cams now.
So in sections eleven and twelve of the evidence based in the report, it discusses how there's a high concentration of people from the deprived areas of the city that use the short break service. And obviously, we know Bristol's a really unequal city as it is. How can, what steps can the officers take to ensure that any cuts to the service don't impact on those from the socioeconomic backgrounds or minimise the impact as much as possible?
So children access kind of based on assessed need and that's kind of their, the child's individual need, but also looking at the needs of the family and there may be additional pressures, you know, on the family because of socioeconomic factors as well. So predominantly, it is a needs-based based service. But what we want to do in terms of especially our commissioned offer is kind of really look at where services are and can we make sure that they are targeted to those areas so that, you know, if families can't afford to get a bus to the other side of the city or they don't have access to transport, that they've got easy links to those services so that we can try and minimise the impact in terms of having to travel or having to pay to get there. Or, you know, how do you manage getting there when you've got another child to look after? And so that's something we want to look at. And we know that, you know, Bristol, it's hard to find spaces as well to hold sessions. So we want to support providers with that as well. So, you know, linking with special schools, where possible, ask them if they could be, you know, for venues. We used to have an arrangement like that, which ceased, but looking if we could reinstate that because then it means children can access near to where they go to school and usually near to where they live. So this kind of those, those things we'll look at. And also, we've got our sessions coming up with parents and that's something we want to kind of tease out there and get their views on as part of that engagement process.
Okay, Susan, go ahead.
I just got a thing from point nine where it says about a residential short break service which has not been running since some time and that will create a seventy-five thousand savings with no direct impact. If it's not been running for some time, what was that seventy-five thousand, where was that going in the interim between when the contract ended to where we are currently?
Yeah, we put on a range of small grants. So we had a small grant spot so that it went to kind of short-term initiatives with different community groups. So we funded Wimble Hill City Farm, Park Cliff City Farm, a range of smaller community providers to do kind of one-off or short-term provisions. So they were kind of additional things in the holidays, but kind of fixed term rather than being a long ongoing contract.
So would that support if we're using that seventy-five thousand and saving still go on those things?
No, so they were kind of time limited and it was kind of like, this is an additional, additional thing we're putting on in the summer holidays, so there would be less of that.
So it would have an impact, immediate impact on families anyway, which is what it says it wouldn't do.
Well, it would have, yeah, it would have an impact, but not, they're not accessing it as part of their ongoing regular short break. So it's not kind of built into their, their care plan that, you know, every week you will go to this. It was kind of additional, you know, holiday sessions or additional trip or something like that. So it was like a bit extra.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, yes, forgive me, I'm quite new to this whole thing. But so where, at what point is, are the decisions made about how the budget within children's services is broken down? Because I suppose at the moment, from our point of view, it feels like we're being asked to rubber stamp something that we have had no input in. I appreciate, you know, you're all experts. But at what point is that decision made?
So, I mean, I think this is a peculiar one because obviously the decision was made in the budget system process and came out in the budget, in the budget round which we've just passed. And therefore, the discussion is how do we make the change that we've already published, set out in the budget, budget setting round? But yeah, typically, it's done in the budget setting round. So which we're starting, we might need to start quite shortly for the fourth coming year where we, we look at all of the pressures over the position. What is it that we're looking for in terms of savings? What's the likely, you know, because the financial position that we're going to be in? And then we go through processes with members around how do we both, hopefully, continue to support services to deliver to the most vulnerable as far as we possibly can and make the savings where we need to. Ideally, you know, ideally managing in a way that both makes us more efficient and has more of an impact, is more sustainable over time. So that's the principles of the budget round. But that's what will have happened last year through the budget round. This is an area that came into scope through that process, partly as a result of setting a balanced budget, as you say. If that helps you.
Okay, anybody else? So I've got a few questions, must have done, because you guys didn't cover, if that's okay. So in section seven, it talks about the percentage that comes in from the Integrated Care Board and the percentage that the authority puts in. When I look at, when we look at those, they are clearly quite lopsided. So I'm interested to understand how the eighty-two percent and the eighteen percent is decided upon?
So it's a longstanding kind of funding split arrangement that we've had with them. Services are predominantly a social care service, but there are children with health needs and that's kind of reflect that. And important to say that the ICB are not reducing their funding, they're keeping it the same so it will increase their proportion of the split.
And are you confident that that split reflects the needs of the children now as maybe they were five or six years ago or whenever it was that this happened?
Well, we do know that, you know, complexities have increased and young people now are presenting with much greater needs than they used to, much more, you know, complex health conditions. So potentially, it is a conversation we can take away again and have with the ICB. But I know they are similarly under pressure.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And my second question was again in relation to the process that's already gone through. If in January twenty twenty-three, there was, it was supposed to start for the financial year twenty-four, twenty-five, how is it that the previous administration was able to make sure that it didn't? And therefore, it was the committee that is faced with this, making this decision as opposed to the previous administration when it went through for twenty-four, twenty-five?
So my understanding of this is that there would have been, so that we will have published savings against, you know, in our medium-term financial plan against the service. And if we hadn't, I mean, and obviously, we've got, we have got a number of savings published, sorry, we have got a number of savings published going forward. If we don't make the saving, fail to make the saving for the reasons we haven't gone out with the consultation process that we've done, we will have pushed that saving back, making mitigations elsewhere. So we will have been making savings elsewhere in order to make that up until we get, until we've gone through the process that is set out here to consult in order to re-procure. So we will have filled that gap through cuts elsewhere in the service. Okay.
Yeah, it was my understanding that the schedule did not permit this to come before, before the end of term so that it came on to the committee for your first.
So that it came on to the committee for your first policy committee. Okay.
And it is worth saying, it's very unideal that that's happened. I think, you know, just wanted to say, you know, we wanted to say that. It's not, it's not an intention that we wanted to bring a decision that, you know, effectively, as you say, there's limited, there's limited amounts of things that can be done. I think going forward, we would want to be identifying the strategy and the priorities with the committee in order to identify, you know, where do we need to make savings with you? So I think it's an oddity and I think, you know, it's not one that anybody really wants to be bringing from our listening.
Okay, and my second question was in relation to when, are we currently in the, because it's three plus one plus one, are we currently in that second plus one element? Is that, is that the year we're now in or are we beyond that?
Yeah, we're beyond that because it was obviously, we were meant to recommission for first of April this year, but because of delays to the decision, we had to vary the contracts to extend them for an additional year. So we are in an extra year of what we originally commissioned for.
Okay, so it's three plus one plus one plus one and we're in the plus one now. So if there was further delay, that is going to put back the timeline in order to get the contracts out and agreed and all that kind of stuff and allow. So there are implications there as well?
Yeah, we would probably be in breach of procurement regulations in doing so.
Is anybody else have anything, Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on a point that was actually in the public forum statement. It's just about the consultation that was run. I obviously understand, see, in the appendix, you've got a breakdown of the, you know, what people's responses and things like that. But in the the public forum, it was picked up that a lot of families who may be reliant on this didn't feel like they had an adequate opportunity to give their views and to make a comment. So could I just ask for a little bit more of a, bit more information on sort of how we made sure we reached out to as many families as possible, that they had access to the consultation process and that they were taken into consideration when we were making these decisions?
Yeah, thank you. So ahead of this and ahead of even kind of knowing the budget situation, we did an engagement process, this was back in twenty twenty two, which was kind of looking forward and sort of coming to the end of our original contract terms, what is most important to families and trying to capture their views generally about short breaks. We then did another engagement process in May twenty twenty three to kind of build on that and look at that and see, you know, are there any gaps in provision? You know, what's important to you, regularity, location and building on that as well. The consultation, yeah, it went out on the twenty first of November till the second of January. It's not ideal with the Christmas holidays, but it met kind of the statutory timelines set by our consultation team and they led on, you know, helping us write the consultation. Again, as I said earlier, we take the feedback that it was quite complicated and time consuming for families to fill in, which is why we did that additional guide, if you like, on how to complete it and did a range of sessions at our commissioned providers. So with our BME group, we did a coffee morning at a special school. We went to community of groups. We had two parents events, one in the evening online and one in the day online. You know, everyone who accesses a short break was sent an email to let them know that the consultation had gone out and inviting them to attend events. And we sent them a follow up email ten days before the close. But I think, you know, it is, these are busy parents. A lot of them work and our carers. So we've kind of taken that feedback on board through our ongoing processes that actually, you know, we need to be more proactive in going to them. And that's something we're committed to do to and going forward to going along to sessions. If that's just kind of having a store there and saying, you know, come to us if you want, having more kind of a range across the city. So when we're doing our ongoing engagement, we're going to have a session in north, east, central and south and then online sessions as well, both in the day and in the evening to try and improve engagement. Because it is, it is feedback that we take on board and that we can do more about.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So one following on from that, is there a way of increasing the statutory length of a consultation? Because you said they met the statutory length, but obviously, that wasn't considered to be long enough. And so secondly, what's the consequences of, what's the consequences of being in breach of the procurement regulations?
Yeah, so in terms of the length of the consultation, my understanding is for citywide consultations, a standard practice, they do six weeks, but they can go up to twelve weeks in certain circumstances. I believe that we can go longer than six weeks. And that's something that we can look to do going forward to make sure that we're capturing more views across that. In terms of being in breach of the procurement rules, so it is, you know, it is law. So we would be in breach of the procurement law. That's not to say it can't be done.
I think that that depends on the consequences really of that are when a provider challenges, generally, so when you have a challenge around market unfairness. And then there are quite high penalties for local authorities who breach that public contract regulations. I think also that the period of consultation, it can go up to twelve weeks. I mean, it probably could be longer than that. But just to take into account that this was happening at the time to enable that earlier decision. So and had the needed to take place. So it couldn't have been dragged back to sort of starting in January, February. It was, at the time, it was because of when the decision was due to be taken. Okay, so just to be clear then, in point number seven, it's saying that the current annual budget is three point three four million. So that's what it is now with two point seven four million coming out of Bristol. That's, is that for the five year period or is that for the three, is that the five year or?
That's the annual budget.
That's the annual budget, okay. And so from the two point seven four million, it's the four seven, was it four seven? It's two seven three three four oh, that is going to be taken out of that particular part of the budget. Okay. I'm looking around to see if anybody's got any other comments or questions before I move on to the next stage. Okay. So, thank you for that. I think we've explored how it is that it's got to a position where we're being asked to put this through. So there are four recommendations on this paper. And as they are key decisions, there will need to be a seconder in order for this to, for these to go through. So firstly, can I ask for a seconder on this? You have to vocalize it, Cam.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. And so I would, so the key decision is that the Children and Young People's Committee agree to reduce the short breaks for children to save the service by two seven three three four oh, in line with the options on the paper. Authorizes the Executive Director of Children and Education in consultation with the Chair to procure and award the targeted short breaks contract in line with the procurement rules and the maximum budget envelope outlined in the report. Authorizes the Executive Director of Children and Education to invoke any subsequent extensions or variations specifically defined in the contracts being awarded up to the maximum budget outlined in the report. And I would like to propose an amendment. Do we have to vote on it? I have to get a seconder and then a vote, is that right? Seconder and then a vote, fine.
Yes, yeah.
So I would like to add to this that once the consultation and the contracts have been outlined, that that comes back to us as a committee so that we're in a position to be able to make those comparisons at that time. Does that make sense, cutting it or not? No?
If it falls now, if we vote against it now, then they would have to go back and rejig the contracts anyway. How does, they would have to look, I'm confused.
Okay, well, if, if this falls, then it falls.
Okay.
Because we vote for all or we, so we vote for or we vote against, that's what the decision is.
Yeah.
So if one falls, the others, the others will not, will become irrelevant because they're related to the first, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm proposing for is to add on to number three, that once that work has been done, the contracts come back so that we are in a position to be able to see the impact that the cut has had. Ellie?
So would that be at that point to note? Because obviously, we wouldn't be able to influence those contracts. We would just, it would just be for us to know and to understand, like you say, how that feeds through.
And it would also give us the opportunity, well, or and myself the backing, when I go into the Leader and Policy Chairs Committee to discuss the budgets that's about to be laid before us, I would be, I would be better armed, if you like, to be able to go in there and make those arguments. And I recognize that it won't impact on the contracts that the officers would have put out because of the, because of what's happened today and the time scales. But it would give us an understanding and it would give me the backing of the committee to be able to make the arguments when the next budget round, budget things come around. Would you like to take an adjournment for five minutes to have? Because this is the other thing that Ian said, is that if you propose an amendment, you might want to take five minutes, get the wording correct, agree on the wording and so it's really clear. Okay, so shall we come back a half past six? And that gives me and Jo the opportunity to make sure the wording is clear. And then we can, we can kind of talk, you know, ask questions or whatever so that we can process what it is that, where Ian's informed us that we don't need to amend this. We can do the same as we did with the previous paper and just ask this to come back to us so that it's open. So, Cam, you've seconded these four. So I'm going to read them out again, just for clarity. And then we vote on each one?
Three of them are connected.
Are connected, so we, so we'd have two, so we'd have, we're voting one, two and three and then four?
You can, you can vote on the whole if you, if you think that that's, that's what you want to do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All in one go, on block, yeah, you can do that, yeah.
Okay. So this is what we're voting on then, okay? To reduce the short breaks for disabled children services by two seven three three four oh, in line with the consultation report. Authorize the Executive Director of Children and Education in consultation with the Chair of Children and Education Committee to award the targeted short breaks contract in line with the procurement routes and maximize the budget envelope, to the maximum of the budget envelope outlined in the report. Authorize the Executive Director of Children to invoke any subsequent extensions, variations specifically defined in the contracts being awarded up to the maximum in the envelope outlined in the report. And to agree the changed eligibility to the Bristol Autism Project. So it's accessible by families living within the Bristol boundaries only. And I'm going to take all four of those together. And so I'm going to ask for hands up for those that are for these amendments. And I'm going to vote for. So we've got six, four, okay? And can I have votes against? So we've got two against. And then therefore, there's no abstentions because that's, that's all of us, okay? So that paper passes. And what I'd say to those in the gallery, when the contracts come back, that we're specifically bringing it back, the budget setting, I will have direct involvement with. It's a different set of policy committee chairs and it's a different leader that will be looking at the budget when we go into budget setting. We're going to be really clear from the contracts what the impact is. And I am going to, I will ask my committee to give me, to support me as I go into those budget consultations to bring that, to bring that money back in. Because at the, at the moment, the only way that we can put the contracts out including the, including this money is to take it from somewhere else in children's services, which is equally as damaging and equally as difficult. We'd be back here talking about another aspect of children's services with another group of people saying, please don't do it. We wouldn't ideally be in this position of having to ratify a decision of which we didn't have any involvement in or that had already been taken out of the children's services budget. However, it is, it will be my intention to go back into the budget consultations in order to bring that back into the short breaks and for it to be protected. I'm not going to, I can't say that's going to work. But what I will say is that I'm going to use my, myself and my committee and my executive lead for children's services and education to put that case really strongly. And I, I'm reasonably confident that that will, that that will, that will get a good hearing, let's put it that way, from those that are also policy chairs now and the lead while we set those budgets. Really difficult, but thank you. And so this, that takes us on to agenda item number ten, which is the Financial, oh, provisional act output report. So this is period twelve for twenty three, twenty four. So period twelve is kind of end of year, basically, it's the end of the financial year. And the report presents, children is presented to us, this is for noting, our Executive Director for Children and Education is going to outline our report. And then we'll take comments and questions from members. But this will outline for us the position that we're in as a, as a department within the council.
Thank you. And just to introduce Guy Marshall, who's here with me as the Finance Business Partner. So we're going to do this together. He knows, he knows it much better than I, and we'll do it together. So just to say, so you're, so, so yes, this is the Finance Provisional Act Report from the end of last financial year. So this isn't where we are now. This is where we were at the end of the financial year. And obviously, what we will do is bring, each time we meet as a committee, we will bring a finance report which represents the latest published position in terms of the budget for children's services and education. So as you can see in the report, it covers, and just to say, it covers the general, what we call the general fund, which is basically the budget underneath, sorry, basically the budget that underpins children's social care. But it also covers the education services dedicated schools, GRDSG. It presents the outturn for maintained schools and it also covers a bit about capital and projects in the direct country as well. So we will be producing, as I say, we'll be producing a very similar report each time. Just in terms of children's social care, so it had an approved general fund budget last year of eighty eight point seven million. Pressures during the year principally from placements, from residential placements. So we can talk a little bit about that if it's helpful. Led to additional budget being made available via what we call the supplementary estimate of eighteen million pounds. We had an additional eighteen million pounds into children's social care during the year last year. And yet, even given that, there was an over spend of 5.4 million, partly again as a result of children requiring residential placements for social care needs. So the main pressures were and remain children's social care placements, particularly residential placements. We do have a pressure around support for asylum seekers, particularly people with no recourse to public funds, which has been going up here as well as elsewhere across the country. And we also have a pressure around, as we all know, about home to school transport, which is linked to a rising number of children with EHCPs and the distance that children are travelling to school. So the pressures remain going into this financial year and we'll continue to update you every time we meet on them. And you can talk more about social care. So just coming on to education. And the education budget had an overall approved general fund budget of 21.6 million, which increased due to staffing pay awards to 28.4 million during the year. And the overall outturn was 24.9. So the education side of the service underspent by 3.5 million, but that was principally because of significant vacancies in the service which we are recruiting to as well as some lower-than-expected internal trading charges applied to education, which again we are looking at. In terms of transformation, so what we call the Our Families Programme, which is the Transformation Programme for Children's Social Care, has a budget, had a budget of 1.5 million, which we used during the year. And again, we can talk about the work that we did there, but a lot of it was particularly around both fostering and the development of children's social care, children's homes, sorry, so that we can increase our capacity in the city to cater for children so that they don't have to go to residential placements further away. And then coming on to DSG, so the gross allocation in 23 for DSG, as you can see, was 452.3 million. So that's total amount of school budget which goes out to schools and settings across Bristol. DSG end of the year overspent by 18.9 million. We know that that was due to a high needs block deficit. So the high needs block overspent by 20.1 million on the schools block, underspent at 1.5, which gave you that position. And as we know, the reasons for the variations in the high needs block include the rise in demand for children with EHCPs, children in SEN, particularly top-up funding to schools with placements, top-up funding for schools and placements into independent, non-maintained schools. And the variance in the schools block in particular arose from the closure of St Barnabas Primary and from the growth fund underspending by 1.2 million, which is due to pupil numbers. So, and again, you know, I'm sure we'll come back to the high needs block deficit a number of times throughout the year as we talk about special educational needs and the work that we're doing there. So maintain school balances. Again, all schools have been very tightly squeezed in terms of school funding, we know that. So 2324, continue to see a worsening of school finances with the maintained school estate being an overall net deficit of 1.8 million, mainly driven by an accumulative deficit in maintained nursery schools of 7.1 million. And offset by other parts of the sector. It's worth saying that we are doing some work on maintained nursery schools. It also will feature on our, I think it's okay for us to say, it will feature on our forward agenda the proposals around maintained nursery schools. And I know it's a cause of concern particularly for those nursery schools. We're very, very keen to work closely with them to be able to continue to support children in a way that they are doing in a financially sustainable way. During 2324, primary, secondary and pupil referral units all reported in year overspends. And, I mean, I may be getting into too much detail, but the closing position of the maintained school estate was an additional debt of 1.7 million, bringing the accumulated deficit to 3.4. And then in addition to maintained nursery school sector being an overall deficit alongside maintained secondary school and the maintained prue. So schools are reporting continued pressures into 2425. And obviously every time, as we know, every time academies convert, there is an amount taken from the local authority which goes to the trust which it's joining. So that's continuing to hit the local authority budget as it does elsewhere. And then finally to capital, so our Children's and Education Capital Programme was 16.3 million in 2324. It underspent, although we plan to be able to manage the programme. So the underspent was 3.3 million as published in this paper. And they arose from some children's social care services where there was some delay for planning permission and negotiation with highways over the access road. Some of the children's capital programme, which was to do with the SEN investment programme, so life-like maintenance and line of projects. The South Bristol Youth Zone, where, again, I'm sure we'll talk more about the Youth Zone in this committee. But the market values and construction costs have risen considerably, but we're working, so we revised options for the remaining fund. And a full business case was agreed by Cabinet in January 2024. It's worth saying there's a new programme manager now overseeing that work. And then the SEN investment programme overdelivered by 1.1 million due to a combination of achieving more than planned in the year, although we've got a lot more to do. And it's also funded by grants, it doesn't look quite bothering. So I think that's the summary, but there's a lot of detail in this report. So you and I are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, over to committee members. Okay, Katia, and then anybody else just put your hands up.
Just a small one, I just noticed now is your post-adoption is in an underspend, if I understand that correctly. Not a very huge amount. Knowing something about adoption, does that mean that that's the post-adoption for children that are Bristol-born and then adopted somewhere else? Because that's the usual practice, isn't it? They're not adopted within the city.
Yeah, they can be adopted.
They can be adopted.
Yeah, absolutely, we're part of Adoption West, which are regional adoption agencies, so we're there. Our numbers, and we'll bring forth, our numbers of adoption have really significantly dropped.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Is the reason for that?
There's, what we look at is permanence for children and to our practice really is to try and keep children within families, connected people, within their communities. So what we look at is for an increase in our special guardianship orders for children who then will be remaining with properly families.
Because I just noticed from that particular community that they always struggle with, like every other community, I suppose, struggling with giving support and money for their post-adopted child because they're often... Oh, they're adopted now, that's it, that's all over now. They've got love and family, they don't need help anymore.
There is Adoption Support Fund which supports.
Okay, so the reason for that underspend is because there's less adoption because you're going to follow it, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, anyone else indicate a few?
It was a need to check, so the Adoption Support Fund, can that be accessed by special guardians and other family members? Is it just for adopters?
Yeah, we've got policy in place. And what we've got for our special guardians is a no detriment policy. So we have increased the support to our special guardians. We've increased the support in the team that supports our special guardians and the opportunities that they have. So the no detriment is in terms of funding, similar to foster care, et cetera. So it's, we'll bring it back at some point, but it's a significant priority for us to ensure there is the support in place.
And it's part of that, sorry, being able to make applications for the Adoption Support Fund.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so other than we have a lot of money for the services that we're supposed to be providing and neither does our school service, but lots of things. Thank you, Guy, because you don't seem to have said anything, but you've sat there for nearly two hours. Is there anything that you want to add? I mean, the main pressures are the ones that we love, you know, about special educational needs, children's placements, and then the knock-on effects of that in terms of staffing and transport. Yeah, homeschool transport.
So we talked in the briefing, didn't we, a little bit around the general knowledge of the committee and whether it would be worth doing some briefing sessions around particularly things like DSG because it's quite a complex area.
Yeah.
I think that would be a good idea, probably.
Is that something that, yeah, I'm getting nods and things, Katia?
And just something disappointing, that we were jumping between the different tables. Do you have a PowerPoint with the tables on or do you just know your pages really well?
Sorry, I probably summarised too quickly. I can talk through the paper in future if that's helpful.
If you just say what page, table, it is helpful because you were going. So that would just be helpful so that we can immediately, but the training definitely helps.
Yeah, I mean, in a sense, it's, you know, so this is where we ended up at the end of March. I think, you know, when we do this in August, we'll be looking, I don't know, we'll be looking at end of May or end of June.
So period two, which is May, we'll go to the end of August committee with possibly an update around period three as well, which is end of June, which is where we are now, of course.
And maybe we could bring a more, you know, a presentation which is clearer, so yeah, apologies for that.
I mean, if committee members have, yeah, I mean, budgets aren't my thing either. So if anyone's got any suggestions as to how this might be presented so that it's kind of clearer for people that aren't education finance experts to understand, that would be probably really, that would, you know, then please do say that because I think officers would be more than willing to present. Because if we don't understand it, then neither does anybody else really looking at the paper unless they're an education finance expert. And there aren't that many, are there, really? Kind of feel that if you are, then you either work in school or maybe you work in the local authority. But it is an area that I think that we as a committee need to try to get a better understanding of and support our education, our children's care staff because of where this sits, because of the importance of this committee, because of the importance of those two budgets within the entirety of the council and the impact that it has. And I think it's important that we have a broader understanding, not just across our committees but across all of our parties about this particular area because A, it's hugely pressured on the council in general. And when you speak to the chief finance officer, it's this area and adult social care. Those are the two areas that are really bringing the pressure under the council budget. So the better understanding that we all have and then can disseminate within our parties, I think, the better. So I'm going to certainly take you up on that, Guy, to put some training together for committee members. And the last thing I think I'm going to say is if there's any other areas that you think that we either need to have some kind of improved training on or briefing on, anything specific that might be coming through, but also more generally about our kind of understanding as a committee as we're going forward with this, please do let the South know or let Jo know and Democratic Services will be able to arrange that for us. Because I get, you know, I do have regular briefings. So there are things that will come up and for committee members to see things quite sort of, you know, fresh, I suppose, without having some background because it does jump around and these services are different for different groups of children and within different sectors and things. So please do let us know what those are. And the final bit is around, we had our forward planning session and we did talk about standing items. So the reason that we've not put these standing items in today's committee is because basically, it's an administrative thing. The forward plan was put together on May the 10th and so we hadn't yet sat to decide what it is that was going to be coming forward as standing items. But as of August, we will get numerous things that we are then in a position to monitor. So like school attendance, for example, EHCP processing, assessment processing, the review schedule for those EHCPs. So the things that people scrutiny were specifically looking at is brought across. And then the other things that were added within the workshop are also on that report. And so I was talking to Jo a bit earlier, it's going to be an A4 and it would be something that is updated each time that we meet so that we can monitor and watch and kind of keep a track of those things. And it's also very transparent and open. Because I'm sure that if people are thinking, why haven't we spoken about EHCP? You know, there are things that should be coming each time and are publicly available. So, five to seven, thank you very much for people.
So, Chev?
Oh.
Sorry. I think we just need almost the committee to formally note the recommendation in the report.
Sorry.
I think you just need to formally note the recommendation.
And can we formally note the recommendations in the finance report for the end of the financial year? Everybody's nodding, okay. Have a lovely rest of your evening, thank you very much. And see you again in August, thank you.